All right, we'll call the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. In order, we have Tanya Collins from CEDOCOG here. She is the representative for the county, of which Bellefonte Borough is a sub underneath the county. So, Tanya will run the meeting. Tanya, it's all yours.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I will try and make this pretty quick. I'm pretty new to CEDOCOG, so I'm probably not going to be as fast as Mitzi was when she came to do the first public hearings. So, tonight, of course, is the public hearing, which is the first step in the process for applying for 2024 CDBG funds. I have an agenda that I handed out to everyone. If somebody in the audience doesn't have a copy, there's one up on the table up here for you to follow along if you wish. And we're going to start out with a little bit of history of the program. The Community Development Block Grant Program was created through an act of Congress, and the funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Pennsylvania through PA Act 179, which created an entitlement grant program for municipalities, which is administered through the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, also known as DCED. The purpose of the program is to assist municipalities with projects that provide decent housing, suitable living environments, and expand economic opportunities principally for low-to-moderate-income persons. Tonight, we will discuss the regulatory requirements associated with the CDBG-funded projects and review the public announcements, which are required every year as part of the application. And we will discuss project proposals for 2024 CDBG funds. Allocations have not yet been announced for 2024. However, the estimated allocation for Bellefonte Borough is $117,993. The estimated annual allocation in total for Center County, including the on behalf of Bellefonte Borough, is $465,164. Eighteen percent of the annual total allocation goes towards administration, which is handled by CEDOCOG through its contract with the county. If you take a look on the next page in your packet, there is an application schedule there. There are some key dates that I wanted to point out to you. June 17th is the project selection meeting, at which time the borough will formally select its project for 2024, and that would be from the projects that we discuss here tonight. Any project that is considered for selection has to be discussed at this public hearing this evening. August 6th, at 6:00 p.m., is the final public hearing. This is to be held at the county level. A notice will be published in the CDT and on the CEDOCOG website, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on the projects selected for funding by both the borough and the county. August 13th at 10:00 a.m. is the CDBG application approval by the county. This will be held at a commissioners' meeting at the Willow Bank Building, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on the county's approval of the CDBG application submittal. Once the application is submitted, which is usually in October, funds usually are not available until the following year. Right now, we are just receiving funds from 2023, so it takes about a year to get those funds then from the county. The next page in your packet has both eligible and ineligible projects. The list of eligible projects is longer than that list of ineligible. That's a good thing. The projects that are eligible include a broad range of activities, as you can see, such as infrastructure improvements. That includes roads, sewer, and water, community centers, historic preservation, economic development activities, and public service projects. Activities that are not eligible for funding include political activities, general operating expenses, anything considered to be a maintenance activity, as well as any activity that is the general purpose of government to provide to its citizens. On the next page, you will find the three national objectives. This is for fundability of a project. That project must meet one of these three national objectives. The first one is that the project must benefit low-to-moderate-income persons. This is 51% of individuals benefiting from the project have to be in that low-to-moderate-income category. This is the objective that is most often met by projects that are using CDBG funds, and 70% of the county's allocation must be used to meet this objective. The second national objective is the elimination of slum or blight. These are mostly demolition projects and can be done on a spot or area basis. However, the area elimination would require a municipal declaration. A maximum of 30% of the allocated CDBG funds can be used to meet this national objective. The final national objective is it's not often used. It's a response to urgent needs, such as with the pandemic. There must be a formal declaration of a disaster or emergency, which is to have occurred in the last 18 months, and it can only be used to eliminate the emergency. This is also a maximum of 30% of the CDBG funds used for this objective. There is no match requirement with the CDBG grant. However, applicants who are willing to put some local funds into either engineering or construction of the projects usually are looked upon a little more favorably. Moving on to public announcements. These are announcements that must be reviewed each year for the submission of the CDBG grant. First is the fair housing. The fair housing notice is attached in your packet. Fair housing is a requirement for each county that states they will not discriminate in the sale, rental, leasing, financing, or brokerage of housing within the county because of race, color, sex, national origin, religion, or handicap disability, as prohibited by Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Fair Housing Act. The PA Human Relations Act adds additional protected classes of age, ancestry, and use of guide and support animals because of blindness, deafness, or physical handicap. Each year, the entitlement county must take these fair housing actions. First, they must pass by resolution that the county and Bellefonte Borough will not discriminate in housing issues. Second, they must publish a fair housing notice in the local paper notifying the public of the fair housing officer and how to file a complaint. The county must participate in or conduct one fair housing activity. 2023 was a poster that contained QR codes that when they were scanned, it took the person to some fair housing issues and different literature that could be read about that. And you must use the fair housing logo on all notices and materials dealing with housing programs. CEDOCOG takes care of these for the county and the borough. Center County has adopted and published a fair housing analysis and has established a plan to further assure fair housing in the county and adopted a grievance procedure for anyone who believes they have been discriminated against. Complaints may be addressed to the PA Human Relations Office or additionally to the Center County Local Fair Housing Officer, Betsy Barnes. Next, we have the anti-displacement plan. This is also attached in your packet. Under Section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, the county is required to pass and have included in its master plan files a residential anti-displacement and relocation policy. This policy describes steps that will be taken to minimize displacement of persons from their home as a result of any CDBG-assisted activity, and must include a plan for replacement of units and relocation assistance if displaced. It is always the intent of Center County and Bellefonte Borough to undertake CDBG activities which do not result in displacement of residents. Moving on to 504 requirements. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 states that no individual with a disability shall solely by reason of their disability be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Bellefonte Borough does not discriminate in access to participation in or treatment or employment in its programs or activities. Attached is a statement on the county's required 504 annual review. As part of each year's CDBG application, Center County, on behalf of Bellefonte Borough, solicits public input on the accessibility of the borough's facilities and programs to the learning, mobility, visually, hearing, and language-impaired persons. If the public is aware of any need for modification to the borough's facilities, public streets, curb ramps, pedestrian access routes, or programs or services in order to increase accessibility, I invite the public to comment now. And anybody can comment on this. There are any Section 504 issues. Okay. Hearing no comments, I will move on. The Center County, on behalf of Bellefonte Borough, Section 504 Compliance Officer is Krista Davis, Center County Risk Management, as named in the attached resolution. Any person who believes that they have been discriminated against or denied equal opportunity or access to programs or services may file a complaint, which shall be referred to as a grievance to Krista Davis or directly to HUD. The notice is attached, which contains Krista's contact information. Moving on to the Section 3 preference statement. This is at the bottom of the agenda, the front page of the agenda. Exclusive to HUD programs such as CDBG, Section 3 is a provision of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968 that is regulated by provisions of 24 CFR Part 75. This ensures the employment and other economic opportunities generated by certain HUD financial assistance be directed to low and very low-income persons. The county has a legal obligation to provide economic opportunities to low and very low-income persons, and the Section 3 action plan outlines how the county, Bellefonte Borough, and its subrecipients, contractors, and subcontractors will comply with Section 3. All right, we're going to move on to the project review. Today's hearing, as I said, is the first steps for applying. Oh, yes, sure.
I just have a curiosity question. When I'm looking at this preference statement, I previously heard that the 51% was for low or very low persons, or people that we could absolutely point through either a survey or something else are people with disabilities. I don't see that here.
Those are, that meets different qualifications for fundability. So, the Section 3 preference statement doesn't have, isn't connected to the 51% national objective. So, this is for labor standards. The Section 3 statement is for labor standards, following that we're making sure that we're following the stated income limits, which you see there is $57,700 for one person, and that any funds, grant funds, that come from the federal government are geared towards those low-to-moderate-income, or businesses have the opportunity to receive those funds to work on the project. The 51% in the surveys that you're talking about, when we get a project idea, if the project is located in a specific area, we would have to, some of them require a survey that we would have to do to see if we meet that 51%. But not all areas do, because we have some presumed groups, like you mentioned, the disabled and elderly, just to name two of them, that projects can qualify based on the presumed group as well. You're welcome. All right. This is the first steps in the process of creating a three-year community development plan for the borough. As part of the CDBG application process, this three-year community development plan will be accepted by the borough. At this time, I would like to give council and the public an opportunity to propose projects for consideration, and as a reminder, any project that is to be considered has to be discussed here tonight at this public hearing.
Tanya, obviously, the one project that we have, we have a multi-year project on the suspension bridge in Talleyrand Park. A council discussed this a couple months ago. Given that the engineering and the permitting that's required, we realized that two years of funding was not going to be enough if we were going to have to cover the extensive cost of perhaps a NIPD's permit and things like that. So, one of the main ideas that we had was to use this year's, this funding for, again, the suspension bridge.
Okay. Does anybody else, would anybody else like to add anything? It's nice to have a longer list, just in case of anything, but any other projects that you would be thinking of that could be applied for?
If you, if you could, I mean, I, just for, you know, council, their own edification here, the eligible activities, they look great. And I, you know, when we look down this list every year, we can think of a thousand projects, but every time that we come up with one, given the fact that we only have a portion of the borough that's in the low-to-moderate-income group, could you kind of explain the limitations that we have on some of these and what we, you know, what are, what are some of the other options? We have been doing street scape projects in our downtown with some of the funding, and that's made a huge difference. But if there's anything else that you can give us some ideas on, we'd like to, like to hear. And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Water and sewer are very big ones that a lot of communities will do, because there's a lot of need there in that infrastructure. That, along with curb cuts, anywhere in the community where there are some curb cuts needed, or even ones that need to be replaced because they are past their useful life. That's, that's always one that can be used as well. Removal of architectural barriers, preventing a disabled person from entering a building. So, if there's a building that does not have access, or if there are restrooms that maybe need access to a, whether it be a stall or a sink in the restroom, or whether it be doors opening, we've done the automatic doors before as well. They all are eligible products, or projects. The hard part is the fundability part in meeting one of those three national objectives. So, there's tons of projects, like that list shows you, that you can do, but once you submit that project, we have to start looking at who does it benefit. And that's where that 51%, over 51% has to be low-to-moderate-income persons. And that can be achieved by either, like you said, the block groups, and I do have maps here if you wanted to see those, identifying the two block groups in the borough. It's block group five and block group six.
Tanya, the, you mentioned about sewer, water. The whole potential lead pipe issue, I mean, would that be something that if we wanted to use future funding for any potential issues there?
The replacement of piping?
Yeah.
Yes. That can, that's eligible. It would depend on where that pipe is being replaced and who benefits from it. So, wherever those pipes are carrying the water to, they would be considered beneficiaries.
Our, our system is a system that, it's not a closed system. It's an open system for the whole borough.
Okay.
That's where we've always kind of run into problems. However, if it's, we're talking about just the, you know, the service line, you know, that, that's where we're now mandated to, you know, begin to look. So, I was thinking if it's a low-to-moderate-income household, strictly, you know, kind of like a couple years ago when they were looking at, you know, during COVID, you know, someone that could, that had their car needed fixed during that time, this would be kind of a similar type of thing, I think.
Yes. If you're, if you're talking about a project that would benefit homeowners individually, that's a different, well, what would happen for that is, and I think happened with the vehicle program, is each person would have to be, like, interviewed and gone over finances to make sure that they fall in that low-to-moderate-income area. But you'd have to do that with each applicant or each person. We've done sewer laterals for people. CDBG has covered sewer laterals, but each household had to do an intake where we went over the financials and made sure that they would qualify by falling into that low-to-moderate-income.
I, I don't know if we, you know, we could just go ahead and throw it on a list if we wanted to.
Are you asking for the service lines or the lateral lines? Because I think if you do the, well, the laterals runs to go from this main service line into the house, correct?
Yeah, it's a service.
Oh, okay. I thought that was, the service line was the big loop. Okay. Okay. According to this map, it looks like the entire town would qualify under disabled population. Is that correct?
That one, I'm not quite sure of. This was a map that was provided to me, and I was looking at that earlier myself. I know the block groups were identified on this map. The rest of it, I can absolutely find out that, that answer for you, though. But I know the borough does not have borough-wide LMI, which, low-to-moderate-income, which if it did, projects could be done pretty much anywhere. And if, if that is the case, which it does look like it's labeled as such on here, that would mean you could do any projects that would benefit the presumed group of elderly or disabled. There's a few others on there as well. I believe it's homeless and battered and abused spouses. Can't think of the other ones right off the top of my head, but there's a whole category of presumed groups that fall into that 51% LMI.
So, my question is, if the whole borough counts, and for the elderly and people with disabilities, we might want to look into adding additional sidewalk projects to make it more accessible for, throughout towns, so people can safely get from one section of town to the other.
We can, yep, we can put sidewalks on the list.
I would put it on the list.
Mm-hmm. Yep, it's not going to hurt to put it on the list.
Preferentially, in my opinion, permeable because of the also requirements that we have to climate action.
Yeah. Any other?
I'm not satisfied with permeable, because it's, you'd have to really maintain that annually or as it fills up. If you don't, then it just becomes a regular sidewalk. So, I would just maybe leave it general at this point.
Any other ideas for the list for projects? You've pretty much covered all of it. I mean, we've talked about sewer, we've talked about sidewalks, laterals, individual projects, removal of architectural barriers, which a lot of projects fall under.
Could this be applied to transportation, especially in the lower income and the elderly? You know, under the circumstances, an option would be for people to use the van service, especially for the elderly, but there's a fee associated with that.
Okay. That I'm not familiar. I can't answer that question right now, but I can find that information out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I'll piggyback on that and say that with CADA possibly leaving, the people who are most likely to be most negatively affected are low-to-moderate-income working-class people. And we don't, if we don't have public transportation for them, they're going to lose their jobs, they're going to lose their housing. So, that's a real concern that I have. It's not just the elderly and the disabled. We have a little bit of a flex there, but for the working class, working age 18 to 65, we don't have that service.
And we have people who are mandated to come to the courthouse and, you know, do certain classes, and that's the only way they can, can arrive here.
Absolutely. I will add it to the list and check into it to see if that's something that could be done with your 2024 CDBG funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody from the public have any comments, ideas? Okay. Good then? Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to go, move on to the historical and environmental impacts. Oh, some of the previously funded projects, as you know, with CDBG funds, of course, have been the street scape safety improvement, the vehicle repair program, and there was the Talleyrand Park pedestrian bridge project. And then this next one is the removal of architectural barriers for the, the suspension bridge. At this time, I invite the public to comment on any concerns they may have regarding the potential for historical or environmental impacts associated with any projects under consideration for 2024 CDBG funding. So, out of the projects that we talked about here tonight, is there any concern over historical or environmental impacts? Okay, hearing done.
Just, just the permeable sidewalk issue.
Okay. Okay. And one last call for any other ideas. All right, hearing done. I would like to close this public hearing at 6:23. And you can keep a hold of those maps as well that I passed out. I don't need to collect those back. Thanks. Thanks.
Order tonight's Bellefonte Borough Business Meeting and remind anyone in the audience that's here today to please sign in at our sign up sheet there as you come in, please and thank you. First, I would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you to stand, please remain standing for a moment of silence for a Bellefonte family that's going through a rough time, lost their son in a drowning accident.
Here, President.
Mr. Brackville.
Present.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is additions to the council meeting agenda. Do we have any additions to the council meeting agenda?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Brackville.
I'd like to make a motion to approve or to add the January 17th meeting minutes agenda under the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. We weren't able to get it, I didn't get all the information until this weekend.
As an, as a agenda action.
It's under reports.
Under reports.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion.
I believe we only need to do this vote if it's an action item. If it's just adding minutes to the packet, there's no motion required.
Okay, so it'll be added as a report.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Mr. Brackville? Okay, you're welcome. Public comment is our next, anyone that has public comment in the audience, please step forward to the podium, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hello? Sorry, I think that was the issue last time, I didn't realize. Donald, West Logan Street in Bellefonte here. May 11th was the food drive for the letter carriers, I was here last time promoting that, and I just wanted to come up and thank everyone who participated. We were able to do 10 times the amount of last year's, which absolutely blew my, my mind, and I just really wanted to shout out everyone in Bellefonte, Pleasant Gap and the Milesburg areas for, for helping out for this great cause, and to thank my volunteers too. Thank you.
Nice. So that was 10 times the amount of what you normally collect for a food drive. Okay, awesome. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm Sharon Weiser from Pine Street in Bellefonte, and I'm here to talk about public transportation. The past six months or so have been a time of uncertainty for those of us who have been relying on CADA. Ralph Stewart, Don Holderman, the Borough Council members have been working on behalf of residents like me amidst poor communication from CADA in the past couple of years. I sincerely thank you. If the Bellefonte Borough Council votes to not renew business with CADA, the independent authority in State College that provides public transportation to Bellefonte, we will know that public transportation as, as we know it will only last until June 30th, 2025. The time between now and a month after the 2025 Memorial Day holiday allows the Bellefonte Borough, its council, center county government, state representatives, and residents in our community 13 months to find solutions for those in need of transportation. Here are some ideas to consider. A new independent authority for public transportation created by the county seat that covers all of Center County. Entrepreneurs start a business like the one from the 1950s that Joanne Knopp pointed out at the January 30th, 2024 CADA public hearing. Nonprofit organizations like churches who support anti-hunger, organized rides by volunteers. Participants in Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, and other mutual help organizations offer rides to those who need to meet court requirements. Without CADA, we will still have Center County Transportation, Uber, and Lyft, as well as friends, family, neighbors, and associates. Now is the time for those in need of public transportation and those who see those in need to get involved. It starts with communication. We need to communicate our transportation needs without worry of embarrassment or shame. Residents like myself need to reach out to the Bellefonte Borough, our representatives on the Bellefonte Borough Council, members of the organizations we belong to, and our family and friends. Thank you again, Borough Council.
Thank you.
My name's Nancy Knoll, and I live in the borough. I came here tonight prepared to beg you to continue some sort of CADA service in Bellefonte. I'm not so sure that's what I still want to do. We need public transportation in Bellefonte, but I don't know if CADA is the right way to do it. Thankfully, I got here an hour early before the meeting, and Sharon and I had lots of time to talk, and I hope you will listen to me as I have listened to Sharon. I think it's very important that we continue some kind of transportation service, but what it will look like, I don't know. And perhaps we need some kind of a, a task force or something to further pursue it. It's very important because some people depend on CADA to get to work. I understand that there's a possibility of using the county services, but if you're traveling five miles to work, I estimate that's going to cost you $200 a week. That means you can't afford to work, and I hear many, many people talking about people who are, who don't want to work, and it frustrates me because it isn't that they don't want to work, sometimes it's because they can't afford to work. Imagine giving up your, your medical assistance and your food stamps in order to spend $200 a week to go to work and not be able to buy food with the money that you have left. It's a catch-22. We need affordable transportation so that people can get to work. I also am very well aware that this is the county seat. We not only have an obligation to people in Bellefonte to be able to come and go from Bellefonte, but we have an obligation to people all over the county to be able to get to Bellefonte. If not a legal obligation, at least an ethical obligation, that everyone should have access to the courthouse. And if State College people can only make it as far as the mall and have no way to get to the courthouse for the services that we are responsible for ensuring that they can access because we chose to be the county seat and the courthouse is here in Bellefonte. And, you know, I've been here long enough to hear all the nightmare horror stories about how State College stole our hospital. Well, they're not going to steal our courthouse. We're going to solve this problem, and we're going to do it together. And I think people like Sharon would be amazing people to put on a task force to research the options and the issues and how can we do this. But I, I just don't want public transportation in Bellefonte to become a dead issue after tonight. And if we choose to eliminate our relationship with CADA, we're at risk of that happening. And I don't know what the right answer is. I'm not here to give you the answer. I'm here to beg you to continue to try to pursue an answer that will work for everyone. I understand that we can't print money, and I understand that CADA is holding us hostage. But I'm sure there's also an answer out there if we all put our heads together and work hard on this together. Thank you.
Others for public comment in the audience? No? Borough Council? No? All right, we'll move on then. Communications written. Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority municipal report from May of 2024 is in your packet for information only, no council action is needed. Anything else on that? No? Next is the Spring Township. Proposed revision of the subdivision and land development ordinance, zoning ordinance, and zoning map. Information was provided for review. Any comments should be sent to Vaughn Zimmerman, Spring Township Zoning Officer by Friday, May 24th. Comments on that? Next is the consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by one single motion. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move Brackville.
Thank you.
Second, Tosti Vacy.
So we had a motion and a second discussion. She'd like to poll the meeting minutes?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Here's where it gets confusing.
Don't we vote on the first one and then we go to the polled things?
Okay. We'll vote on the consent agenda with the minute meetings polled.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Discussion now on the polled meeting minutes.
Okay. Hopefully, this might be one of the last times that we have to do a discussion on this, but again, I just want to say that I really feel that our transcriptionist does a great job summarizing everything that goes on in our meetings, and again, there were a few things that she was unable to hear or catch from, from the recording that, that were needing to be corrected, and I, I saw that that was fine. But we need to be careful, I believe, about getting too wordy and too detailed in some of the meeting minutes corrections. Specifically, I'm referring to page six where the discussion on the historical, or the ornamental lighting rehab project is discussed, and I really don't feel like all of the different side discussions were really necessary to what was going on here. Basically, I, I feel it should just be the motion and what the results were, I mean, if you want to get right down to it.
May I respond?
Is that it? Rita?
Um, for, for now.
Yes, Joanne.
After listening to what Rita has said over multiple sessions, she said that, then the last one, she said she wanted the wording and what is available to be put into here. I went back and I looked at the, listened to the minutes. There are, what she has just asked to redact are actual motions that were made even though they weren't seconded. That was why I put it in, and I do not believe that they should be redacted whatsoever. So what she's asking is that, I asked a question, as a result of that question, I made a motion, and, and in the way the transcriptionist wrote it, she said just to revise the wording. That wasn't, it was much more specific than that. I went in and I listened to the tape, and I put down the exact words that were used in that motion. I do not believe that they should be removed at this point.
Mr. President, may I make?
Yes, please.
Please, thank you. Sorry. I looked up in Robert's Rules of Order about the minutes. First of all, this is not to be a transcription, and I'll just read, just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, how's that? I can, see if I can see it this way. So I just want to read a little bit of this, I'm not going to read all of it, it's very long, but I think this addresses it. The official record of the proceedings of a deliberative assembly is usually called the minutes or sometimes the journal. The minutes should be kept in a substantial book or binder. I did have a question about that. Who keeps the binder?
We, the borough staff does, or myself as borough secretary, but we take, we keep the minutes forever.
Okay, okay, and they're all up to date?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the contents of the minutes, thank you. In an ordinary society, the minutes should come, should contain mainly a record of what was done at the meeting, not what was said by the members. The minutes must never reflect the secretary's opinion, favorable or otherwise, on anything that's said or done. It goes on into a lot of detail, but I do think these first two paragraphs really address the concerns that we have had with, with our minutes, and I think it does need to, to change and go back to the way that it used to be.
May I respond again? The reason I did this, and I agree with you, that's the way they should be, but we have multiple times gone back and added exact wording, and if that was our protocol, that's why I went in and did exactly what I did this time. If we don't want that, that's fine, but that we have to have a consistent policy or presentation of these, and one, this one whole paragraph where it says, Tosti Vacy motion to revise the wording, it doesn't give the motion. That Robert's Rules there specifically says all motions should be there.
Yes, it does, and, and I can read through all this, but I really don't want to.
Yeah, and as a result, we, we have to do it one way or the other. Either we just put the motions in, say discussion was held and a result, or we put what the discussion was about. I don't want it both ways. We have one or the other.
Okay, I have a response to that. So the, the previous corrections that I've brought up were actually things that were typed in the minutes originally, and then wording was changed. This now, I'm, I'm concerned about adding a whole bunch of basically dialogue questions that everybody's asking here where it really should have, in my opinion, stopped the original, on page six, near the bottom. Brackville asked a question regarding funding for this project. Stewart clarified that this project would be funded out of the street lighting fund. That's fine. That's fine. But then there's a bunch of other conversation added in here that wasn't really related to it. And I, I would concede that Joanne's correct, that we should give a little detail about the motion that she made. And my solution to that would be to say, Tosti Vacy, motion to revise the wording of the original motion to include a HARB review. There was no second to the motion to revise. And all of that other stuff that was added in there about Stewart said this and, you know, Brackbill said that, I mean, that's not really necessary. If somebody wants to know what people said, they can go back and watch the, the video. We really just need to keep to the main details of what the motion was about, in my opinion. And it sounds like according to Robert's Rules of Order.
That's, that's exactly what it is. And perhaps we could even do a quick work session on this at some point, maybe adopting. This is what it is. There's a few changes simply because of the way we operate, but I think it can be much simpler and explain everything very well if we do that.
I would like that, but I do note that if, if we, like I said before, if what she just read, the motion, my motion actually said that I would, and I, and this is the wording, and what you're supposed to do, is put the words of the motion in. So it should say, a sentence or paragraph to the scope of service is to indicate that BNL will include in the bid document that create that HARB review will be included in the construction RFP document for prospective bidders. And secondly, the administration may craft this additional language. That was part of the motion.
Okay, that's fine. But I just think all the extra conversation about who said what before that is unnecessary.
Fine, if we go use that policy going forward, I'm fine with it. But what we've done in the past three months is go over this each time and we've changed them sometimes because one person thinks that it's, that what was changed was not there, or what they put in, I felt was incorrect and I made a change and it's, and, and that needs to be discussed, which is why we should appropriately reprove it. But I do not want us going back and forth, sometimes doing what some person feels and putting the exact wording in and at other times not. It's just not fair to, to the people who read the minutes. It's not fair to the rest of us on council.
Rita, the reason that you pulled the minutes is partially also because you want them to be accurate as to what was, what was the consensus?
Well, at this point, I'm not questioning accuracy on, on the minutes this time. I'm just saying that there's entirely too much detail for, for what we really need. I mean, the minutes right now are, are eight pages long for a 40-minute meeting. It just seems.
Plus a video.
Right.
They, they really want to go back and listen to what was said? Okay.
So, and, and I, I will say that what Joanne said about her motion, that could stay in there. I, but I think all the extra conversation about, you know, before that and the part afterwards with, you know, the last paragraph of that should probably come out. And I don't know what the easiest way is to do that.
Moving forward, I think this isn't about what one person thinks on council or another. I think as a council, we want the minutes to represent our meeting as accurately as possible, obviously.
Right.
So for those who are listening and trying to pay attention, the idea of the minutes are to give you a, a reference as to what occurred in our meeting and Rita's trying to ensure that that is done accurately. And, well, we all are. Joanne's trying to do the same thing. So that's what this discussion is about. So moving forward, I think Vice President Barbara Dan has a good point. Maybe we should put this on a work session and maybe discuss briefly about how we want to move forward with how the minutes are presented. All right, so I'm confused, but I'm going to give a shot. Are we to now vote on what Rita polled?
Rita needs to say what words she wants to delete before we can vote, so we know what we're doing.
At the bottom of page six, stop, or the last sentence that was originally in there, Brackbill asked a question regarding funding for this project. Stewart clarified that this project would be funded out of the street lighting fund. That should be the last sentence, in my opinion, on that page. And then Joanne could word however she wanted to word about her motion that she put up and then it did not receive a second. If, if it's worded the way you liked it in there, that's fine. So, so that paragraph that says, based on Stewart's response.
I think the paragraph before will, it shows why that motion was made. So the one where I had asked BNL would be writing up the, to include the HARB. And then the motion would be, they would think that would, be just like with Randy, having asked a question, I then asked a question and then as a result made the motion.
However you want to do it. I, I just, I think there's just too much in there, so.
I agree.
I think in looking at that, that paragraph that we're talking about right now, the scope of work, that was the only question I had too with that because we want to, want to make sure that the residents understand that the money we were spending was not for the entire project, it was for more getting things ready to run that system. So I'm getting tired just of this thing being pulled. I'd rather just let, let, let our person who's taking the minutes do them and send them in and then we look at them at that meeting if we have to. But I, I just, it was so much simpler for some reason, you know, a couple of years ago. You know, we just kept it to the basic. You give a positive motion, you have a discussion, you make the motion, you're done, that, that topic, so that's my feeling. But I, I agree with the work session as well.
Yeah, we want to make sure that they're accurately depicting what was said and voted on, right? So that's what we want to move forward with. So Rita, you want to remove a paragraph, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, paragraph.
And, and ending after Stewart clarified that this project would be funded out of the street lighting fund. Although Randy, was that you were saying you wanted that sentence in that, about what the question you asked? Is that what you're saying there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't know what to say then.
So if there was more information than anything.
So we have a, we have a paragraph or we just have a sentence?
I don't, I, I want the last paragraph right before the roll call, except for the sentence that says there was no second to the motion to revise. I, I don't really think we need that paragraph there.
Do I have a second to Rita's request to have that removed?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Barbara. Further discussion?
Can we, I am so confused now. So let me ask this question so I know how to vote. So you're removing, you're leaving the paragraph where, about the street lighting fund as is per Randy's request, removing the next complete paragraph and then the last paragraph, correct?
That seems like that might be the easiest way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
That's not what I, can I, can you go around for me again? So I know, I got to, I mean, Alyssa needs to know what you want.
So what, which, what is, you leave the first and second paragraphs as they are with the additions?
On page six, Brackbill asked a question.
That stays in, that stays in. And then the next paragraph where it says, Tosti Vacy, know that the proposal, that whole paragraph is struck. And then the very last paragraph in that section is struck.
Except for there was no second to the motion to revise.
So Stewart said a HARB review and the power was scheduled, nothing else.
Right. Yeah, I would like that one sentence in there, but she doesn't want it. I'm not going to argue at this point.
Fine, you can leave that sentence in there. I just, we definitely need a work session to, to get this ironed out.
Perhaps we can move on and correct from here going forward.
Yeah.
We have to vote on this now, right? Okay. You ready?
Yes.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
No.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
No.
Okay. Next is reports. First would be Mayor, Mayor Buddy Johnson.
Thank you. I have an EMS Week proclamation. Could I be joined by Mr. Scott Roat at the podium, please? An EMS Week proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of the emergency medical service team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, I, Buddy Johnson, Mayor of the Borough of Belfont, Pennsylvania, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim that the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, is Emergency Medical Services Week. The 50th anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, Honoring Our Past, Forging Our Future. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you, Mr. Roat, for all you and everybody does.
Thank you, folks. Mr. Mayor, the Borough Council, proud to own and convert that. Chief? There you go. I figured I talked loud enough, you didn't need that, but I know it doesn't capture on the mics. But as was mentioned, EMS is not just Belfont EMS. It's everything from the time you call 911, it's the county dis, telecommunications or dispatchers at the 911 center, all the way through to the nurses and physicians at trauma centers if someone needs that, or other specialty hospitals outside of our county. And it's a large group. It's coordinated most of the time, as the healthcare system is. And part of that, along with dispatchers, that many times are forgotten. I also want to extend our thanks out to Belfont Borough Police Department. For many, many years, they have been an integral part of every ambulance dispatch within Belfont Borough. They're dispatched on every call. And pre-pandemic, they were there all the time. During the pandemic, that kind of got tailored just because of potential exposure stuff. But even afterwards, we're back. Many times they're there first, they access the patient before we can get there a moment or two later. So their contribution to EMS should not be overlooked and is greatly appreciated and recognized, and we thank you for that. And we thank the borough for allowing them to do that and participate in that part of patient care. So that's all I have. I'm not going to take up your time anywhere tonight. Other than you will be receiving a letter through Ralph, our seventh annual joint municipal EMS meeting is scheduled for the 5th Tuesday, July 30th, at our station at 7:00 PM. And we'll have a little bit of an open house at 6:30 or so if you want to come in and tour or anything. But you'll see that email later this week, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Chief Whitmer, you have anything you want to talk about the report that you submitted?
First of all, good evening. I just wanted to give you a little update, let you know the police department is alive and well. We're continuing to move forward, as I said we would. I'm receiving a lot of, a lot of support from the community. A lot of good things are happening out there. As you see in the report, we're doing, we work together with the sheriff's department to do some traffic control in the school zones. That was very positive. We've got a lot of good feedback through social media on that. We're going to continue to do things like that. We're excited about the new move. Our new officers have started. Everything's going well. Does anyone have any questions regarding my report I've submitted?
Did the new officer start?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of them have started. Officer Larkin started last week and Officer Hurt started today.
Okay.
I'd also like to comment that I see more participation on Facebook from the Belfont Police Borough, a lot more posting, so I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
You're welcome. That was one of my goals, to make us more, get us more out there, let people know what we're doing. And it's, it's working, getting a lot of good feedback.
Well, thanks for coming, Officer Whitmer. I'm sure you had a long day, so we appreciate it. Again, the reports are in your packet. The parking report submitted, Ms. Thompson's report was submitted. HARB will meet on Tuesday, May 28th at 8:30 AM. And again, that's Tuesday, May 28th at 8:30 AM. That's the next HARB meeting.
And I think for the public's purposes, the waterfront associates are going to be presenting their, once again revised plan for the waterfront development property.
Next is, I'll need a motion in a second to approve the land development plans, the final subdivision plan, Crossman, 131 North Thomas Street, conditional final lot addition plan, Wagner, 396 East Lynn Street.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. The other reports were submitted. Mr. Stewart, do you have any comment about your report? Any questions from Mr. Stewart relative his report on Borough Manager?
I'm just happy to answer any questions.
If none, next is the liaison reports. Again, they were all submitted. Are there any questions relative those reports?
Could I do an add-on to Ms. Brooks' report about the Solar United Co-op? She, in her report, she said that there was a tour last weekend. I received an email this morning. There were 46 groups of people who registered for the tours. There were eight homes on the tour throughout the county and seven sets of those people toured the one here in Belfont.
All right, any further comment relative the reports that were submitted? If not, we'll move on to current and old business. First item is the 2024 paving bid. I need a motion in a second to allow staff to review, approve, and select the lowest responsible bid.
Before we do that, let's open them.
He's going to open two bids. He has two.
We have two bids, one from Glenn O. Hallbaker and one from HRI Incorporated. There are 13 options, but I'm, I'm just going to give the total for council this evening. So the options, just for everyone to know, there's Hill Street, Manchester Lane, Triangle Road, School Street, South Spring Street, North Potter Street, Oak Street, South Spring Street, East Lamb Street, Locust Lane, Parkwood Drive, East Pike Street, and the Valentine The first bid is again Glenn O. Hallbaker and the bid is 215,000. So the options, just for everyone to know, there's Hill Street, Manchester Lane, Triangle Road, School Street, South Spring Street, North Potter Street, Oak Street, South Spring Street, East Lamb Street, Locust Lane, Parkwood Drive, East Pike Street, and the Valentine The first bid is, again, Glenn O. Hallbaker, and the bid is $215,991.
Now I need a motion in a second to allow the staff to review, approve, and select the lowest responsible bid.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Blackbill. Discussion. It's a lot of paving.
Well, we probably won't do it all, but try to do as much as we can. So, okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Okay. Next is the service line inventory update. It's in your packet for information only. No council action is needed. Next is the...
I'm sorry. Mr. President, may I ask a couple of questions on that? Thanks, Julie, for the update on that. I did see the addition to the website on that, and I'm still confused on this, and maybe you can clear this up for me. On our website, it says that the project to identify all the water service lines will take place over the next several years until all the lines are identified.
Correct, yes.
So I looked on the service line inventory from, I believe it's from DEP, some general questions from an update on October 25th, '23, and I did not see another one, but maybe there was. And it says that failure to comply, failure to complete the SLI and submit to the department by October 16th, 2024, is in violation of 40 CFR and some other numbers. I have no idea what they are. Completion of inventory is essential to all other portions and of the regulations such as completion of the lead service line replacement plan and lead and copper sampling plan.
Yes, you are correct. It's our initial inventory that is due, so that is a list of all service lines, whether they're known or unknown, and then what we'll be working on going forward is making them all known until they are all fully identified. So we are allowed to have unknowns for a period of time, and then we'll just work on a certain percentage of those over the next several years. That's why it's out there like that. We didn't want anyone to think that, you know, that was a one-time thing. It will be a process.
Okay. I guess I'd have some concerns, because now I'm reading about lead pipes and copper pipes and all those things. So I do have some concerns for our town, our borough, and the people that live here too. Do you have any idea how many homes we will be looking at, if that's the right term?
So, there will be, there's different materials that need to be replaced, possibly need to be replaced, not only lead, and we don't have not found a great deal of that in our working throughout the borough. We've really not found that. We've found a lot of galvanized. That would be a material that we would want to replace. So we'll be looking at that. In the next month or so, or next several months, we'll be putting out more information on identifying for all of the residents. So this was our initial information that we put out, but we're going to get into more detail in the next couple of months.
Okay. Do we have a number of, how many that you have checked so far?
We do not yet. It's going to be an ongoing process on that, so we'll just be building that with the, we're working with our billing company, Munaling, for that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I saw there was some progress on that, and you have a special iPad for doing all that.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Next is the non-uniform collective bargaining unit agreement renewal. I need a motion in a second to appoint Council members Joanne Tostie Vacy, Deborah Clayton, and Doug Johnson to the negotiations committee.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
I'll second, Blackbill.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
I don't know if they voted for themselves. I hope so.
That would be weird.
Next is the Dust of Dawn light at Missoula Park. Missoula Park, a light was installed by West Penn Power on a temporary basis. The Borough received mixed reviews regarding the light. I'm asking for a motion in a second to have the West Penn Power light install, West Penn Power, to install the Dust of Dawn light at the park on a permanent basis.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
Second, Johnson.
Discussion on the light.
The statement here says that there were mixed reviews. I would love to know what the positive and negative comments were in general about this Dust of Dawn light.
I don't have the exact addresses. The light faces the park and the stream. However, some of the nearby residents did call to complain about the brightness of the light and saw no need for it. So that's the negative.
Okay.
The positive is, you know, people liked the light, and it was originally, I think, encouraged to be put in because of some vandalism in that neighborhood. I believe that was the original thoughts of why the light was needed.
Okay. That's what I thought the negative comments were likely to be. Is it possible for putting the light somewhere further away from the homes that had the complaints or create some kind of shielding on that light so that their concerns could be mitigated?
I think if we vote to have the light installed, we can certainly change it at a further, you know, further...
Have you drawn, have you seen the light, Joanne?
No. I know it's kind of near where the houses are.
Yeah, there is a street light at the bottom of the avenue.
Right.
Which is brighter than the light that shines out into the field. So, the light, I went out and looked at it when it was installed. So the light shines towards the stream, which is an area where activity occurs at night that probably isn't what we want to see or hear about. So this was asked for, it was supported by our chief at the time, and it was asked by some residents for safety, and the, actually, the street light has more light that would filter into homes than this light that directs out over to the darker areas of the field.
I just want to be able to accommodate in discussion with West Penn Power. I like the idea. No problem with that. I'd just like to mitigate, so that as many people as possible could be satisfied with the results. That's all I'm asking. So if there's a shielding sort of thing that makes it move, that would be great. If it needs to be moved, fine, but I don't really care. That part, I just would like to have the people have the complaints, know that they've been heard.
What we can do is make, put that in the request and see if it's possible to add the shielding. If it is, I'm sure they would.
Thank you.
Other discussion. All right.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Next is the CADA services topic. Spring Township had previously given notice to exit CADA services on May 9th. Bellefonte Borough was notified that Benner Township also exited CADA services on June 30th. Having both Spring and Benner Townships exiting the CADA services means that CADA will not pick up or drop off within the municipalities. The CADA service delivery after July 1st, 2024, will be even less convenient. Costs for the modified CADA services will increase about 2.5 times over the next couple of years. Municipalities must give a one-year notice to exit or withdraw from the CADA service. Bellefonte Borough should consider giving the one-year notice to exit CADA. Bellefonte Borough could still weigh its option for public transportation services. I need a motion in a second so that we can notify CADA that based on the withdrawal notices of Spring and Benner, Bellefonte Borough is giving notice to exit or withdraw from CADA services as required within the one year of June 30th, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, Blackbill.
Discussion.
I'll go first, I think. You know, it's, not that we don't want CADA or vans coming around, but we can't sustain 2.5 times every couple, every next couple of years to keep this moving through Bellefonte. We need to have a better way, and the way CADA has it set up right now is the same thing they had since we started this discussion. Be two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. And somebody's going to get really messed up trying to get to the mall to get to another bus, and maybe another bus, to get to where they're going. And they just need to, you know, look at what's happening, but, you know, the cost of the ridership is going to go up, the cost for the borough is going to go up, and we just can't sustain that very long.
Again, we're just notifying CADA that... Yeah, go ahead, Deb. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. I know this is a terribly difficult decision, because we've had public transportation here for decades, and to have it removed is a big shock to a lot of people. Looking at the Nittany Valley joint planning region, comprehensive plan for 2023, or 2030, their plan includes public transportation, or at least encouraging the use of public transportation. This could be an opportunity for those five municipalities, Bellefonte Borough, Benner Township, Marion, Spring, and Walker, to collaborate, to maybe come up with a separate independent system that can connect with CADA at the mall, but provide public transportation needs to our little corner of the county that would be separate from CADA, but then still be able to provide some kind of transportation service. But I think it's worth looking into, or at least exploring, opportunities that we haven't looked at before.
Others? Joanne?
Has Deb and Randy both said this is a really hard decision. My first statement is that the proposed services from CADA, excuse my language, stink. However, what limited services we have between Bellefonte and State College are critical to our working citizens who do not drive. The County Office of Transportation offers free services for the elderly and reduced-cost services for people with disabilities to the entire county, which is great, but it doesn't at all meet the needs of children and working-age adults, because in those cases, the cost to use the center county transportation results in an exorbitant price for them just to get to the mall. I believe Dave Lowvinsen told me that the starting price for services to these individuals would be $19 to $20 one-way for the first five miles, and would then go up after that. So if a person who lives here in the borough and needs to commute to State College five days a week for work, then that person would be paying at least $200 per week for public transportation. I don't believe there is anybody, or almost no one here in the borough, that could afford that much for transportation on a weekly basis. At that price, I believe they will not be able to get to work, and as one of the public commenters said, was that they would not, would have to either lose their job, or they would have to move out of town. So we would lose property taxes, we would lose businesses, services, we would lose funding for not only our businesses, but for the borough. It becomes a snowball growing down the hill, gets things worse and worse. Also, if we pull out of CADA, CADA told us it's unlikely that we will ever be allowed back in again. I like what Deb has suggested, is that we work with the municipal of the Nittany Valley and move forward that, but I am not willing to vote at this point unless we have at least a hint of a plan to move forward to get rid of CADA because of their ultimatum, that if we leave, we're not going to have a thing, and then we're dead in the water. Thank you.
Others?
I have a question. This may be kind of an off-the-wall thought, but I was just sitting here thinking about the companies that provide transportation for our schools that already have buses and have drivers that maybe are just working part-time. Is there any possibility that that could be an option?
I think there's, there are options probably out there. That particular one has not been explored. I think there's some public utility issues, like even CADA mentioned a couple of times, that servicing issues, like with inside a municipality, that's why they can't serve when the municipality says, "We're not going to contract anymore." They can't just go to Giant instead, because there's some, like, public utility issues or something that gets in the way. So, you know, with school bus drivers, it may be a similar issue. You have to allow for people with ADA issues to get on the bus and get off the bus. That has to be accounted for. So there are a lot of issues. I think someone mentioned earlier, one of our guests mentioned about a task force. I think that's a great idea. The only thing I would, just while I have a chance to speak here, if you don't give notice now and you go past June 30th, you're in for two more years, not just one. You're in for two, because you must give a one-year time, one-year notice to withdraw. So if we miss June 30th, we, you know, sometime in the following year, we could give a notice, but we wouldn't get out till June 30th of '26. So keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any known funding streams that help municipalities fund public transportation? Not come up with their own system or fund their own system, but in our case, where there is an option, even though it's expensive, we don't have the funding, we're not able to fund that service, are there any funding streams available?
We have not come across any funds for operational expenses. There could be funds for buying equipment, you know, shelters for bus stops, what have you, but it's very rare to find funds for operating expenses. That's what we're finding.
Okay, thank you.
I do agree with what everyone said. It is a very difficult decision. It's just something that is not, in my opinion, financially sustainable. I appreciate the people that came and spoke tonight, and I do think that probably the best idea at this point is to form some sort of a task force and try to work through this and see what we can come up with as a good solution to this, maybe better than what we have.
Good idea. Thank you, Barbara. Others? All right. Mr. Holgermann?
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Out of the lawn, no.
Next, new business. Formal notification from AFSCME with intent to negotiate its collective bargaining agreement that is set to expire December 31st. A motion in a second to appoint...
Yeah, we did.
We did that.
We did it earlier. I'm sorry.
Counsel will hold its next business meeting on Monday, June 17th, due to attendance to the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Annual Conference in Hershey. J.C. Orin Sons and Co. Incorporated, our certificate for payment application number eight, nine, and 10, final for Armory Project, a motion and a second to remit payment to J.C. Orr &amp; Sons Incorporated for the Armory Project.
I'll...
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion for the amount of $59,712.15.
A second?
I'll second it.
Clayton?
Yes.
Discussion?
Okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the John Nastacy Construction Application and Certificate for Payment Number Four and Number Five, final for the Spring Street Streetscape Project. A motion and a second to approve payment in the amount of $17,549.09.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
I'll second, Brackville.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the DCED Letter of Intent. You saw in the packet that Mr. Brackville completed, I believe. I need a motion and a second to conditionally approve the letter of intent to DCED upon approval from the Fire Department.
I'm going, I'd like to change the motion to, a motion to conditionally approve the letter of intent to DCED upon approval from the Bellefonte Fire Department. Bellefonte Fire Department Fire Exec Committee meeting on Thursday, 5/23 at 7:00 PM in the Army Building. It'd be this room. During that meeting, we'll determine if the Fire Department will approve or not. I reached out to Chief Bobby Joe Salvannish and the Logans and Gary, Chief Gary Lor, the undiants, to see if the Bellefonte Fire Department was still interested in working with the DCED study. I spoke with Elise at the County Planning Office this morning to ask if the Fire Department could use the data provided by the Fire Department in February of '23. Elise told me that the information provided by the Fire Department could be used. All the county needs is a letter of intent for DCED to get started. Elise was not sure how long it would take for DCED to complete their assessment, but guessed this would take around four months. Once the assessment is completed, the Fire Department would not be required to follow changes provided from the DCED. My feeling is that the DCED will work at reducing Bellefonte Fire Department to one station, originally starting with this project in 2018. And we went through four people from DCED, and when we were told, when we joined in, the first fire department to drop out, everybody goes. And it never happened with the Fire Department, but it happened most of the time with DCED. So, and during 2020, there was not, they were not able to be involved due to COVID shutdowns. So, you know, I want to let up the Fire Department. They need to own this because we're bringing this through the borough from the Nittany Valley Joint Planning Commission.
So should we just wait till the Fire Department approves it, Randy, and then put it on our agenda?
No, we just move it. We can move it. If they say they want to, they don't want to do it, then that's what will happen. And if it's, if they do, then...
So what are we approving?
The conditional approval based on the Fire Department's approval or not wanting to do it.
Right, this is what the motion said. The motion is second to conditionally approve the letter of intent to DCED upon approval from the Fire Department. That's what you want.
Right, which would be Thursday night. We'll get that.
Did you want the date put on the motion? That's what I was, I'm getting confused about. Or did you just want to leave it the way it was?
We just want to approve the letter of intent
Right.
upon approval of the Fire Department, whenever they do it.
Right, 5/23 is when it is.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, Randy.
I have a second.
I'll second it. Dan?
Thank you, Barbara. Discussion.
Okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Next is the duck feces study. You saw in your packet, there's an individual from Penn State University who wants to do a duck feces study in Talleyrand Park. I need a motion and a second to approve that.
I'll make the motion. Johnson?
I'll second it. Dan?
Thank you. Very interesting.
Away, I have a...
Discussion. I'm sorry, Joanne, about the duck feces, yes.
In the letter at the end of Dr. Nicely's request to complete the study, she says, quote, "If the study is approved by the Bellefonte Borough Council, I am eager to share the results with the council and work together to disclose or withhold location identification in any presentation of the results," unquote. Under the Sunshine Law, if we receive this information, I do not believe location information can be withheld. I think if we sign on, which I don't have a problem with, that she needs to know that whatever summary days she sends to us, including the location data, could be made available to the public under the Sunshine Right to Know Law.
Can we take that under her...
I think, yes, I think what she's saying is if we don't want to know the locations, she will not include it in any reports. That's my understanding. That's your only option because otherwise it would be public information.
Okay.
Here's what I was thinking of when I read that. If she's only doing it in Talleyrand Park, we already have the location. If she's doing it countywide, then she, it would be helpful for us to know that in Talleyrand Park, it's this, but somewhere else, it's something else.
Well, we're only approving the study for Talleyrand Park.
Right, I understand that. But when she says location, then unless she's saying that in the spot right next to the governor's client memorial, and then another spot over in the extension, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me because Talleyrand Park is a small area.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn. Johnson and Dan.